I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, what's on the agenda is Dover Greens parcel number seventy-one fifty-nine zero zero one six, I'm sorry, I'm not loud enough, I guess. What's on the agenda is Dover Green, parcel number seventy-one fifty-nine dash zero zero dash one six two seven zero two, seventy-one fifty-nine dash zero zero dash zero six five nine two zero and zero seven two five nine zero zero eight one five seven six eight. It's located at three hundred to three oh four Hutchinson Avenue in Wingdale. The application is for reversal of decision of the code enforcement officer. Can I have a motion to, for the, a motion to open the public hearing for the Dover Greens reversal of division, decision of code enforcement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, the applicant would like to come up to the podium. Could you please state your name?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the zoning board.
Now, could you, could you state your name?
Charles Gottlieb from the law firm of Whitman.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Now you can proceed.
Good evening, Charles Gottlieb from the law firm of Whitman Ostrom and Hannah in Albany, New York. Here on behalf of Dover Greens LLC and Olivet University. I'm here with Marion Rebro, who is part of Dover Greens and Olivet, and will also have a short presentation after I get through. We're here this evening for an appeal of a notice of violation issued by the building inspector dated September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, which found that our current site plan and special use permit for the Olivet University campus has been expired, which has prohibited further work from happening on the approximately five hundred and thirteen acre parcel. The zoning interpretation notice of violation is based on zoning code section one forty-five sixty-eight E one and sixty-two H one, which essentially says valid approvals shall expire if the applicant fails to obtain necessary building permits within eighteen months of obtaining approvals. Our appeal hinges on the meaning of necessary, and what does necessary building permits mean? The building inspector, the notice of violation, has taken the position that the term necessary means all building permits that were approved, so all building permits for structures that were in the approved project. But that ignores the plain language of the code and the code's use of the term necessary. If the town board wanted to make this a requirement that an applicant needs to obtain all building permits, they would have included that language in the zoning code. So the question becomes, what does necessary mean? And this board is guided by zoning principles in New York law, one being that any ambiguous zoning regulation or code provision must be weighed in favor of the property owner, especially when that property owner is a religious entity. Furthermore, when it, when a term is not defined, like necessary, we need to look at what that ordinary definition is. As I have in our appeal, the ordinary definition of necessary means absolutely needed. The ordinary definition of all is the whole amount. The building inspector cannot extend the definition of necessary to include all. So we need to figure out what does necessary mean? I think a logical step is that the term necessary means all building permits necessary for the applicant to have acquired vested rights in his property and the development. That means all necessary permits to vest the development rights so that there are no longer any concerns of expiration of the approvals. The next question becomes, what do we have to do to show vested development rights in New York? Cases tell us there are essentially two thresholds. One, you can complete substantial construction, and that will vest your development rights, and/or you can have substantial investment into the project, which would also vest your development rights. The highest court in New York has said that vested rights is a demonstration of a, and I quote, "commitment to the purpose for which the permit was granted by effecting substantial changes and incurring substantial expenses to further the development." Once development rights have invested in New York, the approvals do not expire unless they have been abandoned with intent to abandon those rights. This is what necessary in zoning code section one forty-five sixty-eight E one and sixty-two H one must mean. We also looked at, in, in thinking that this is what the board would ask, what does substantial construction mean? What does substantial investment mean? So we went through the cases, and essentially, there's a few that gave us the facts there, where the courts found that vested rights had occurred either by substantial construction or substantial investments. In the town of Orange Town in McGee, excuse me, the court of appeals found that developer had vested his rights after spending a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars on land for access that was required by the town, after spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on access upgrades, and a hundred thousand dollars on water and sewer investments. In total, that developer spent four million dollars in his development, and the court found that since he made those expenditures, his development rights had vested. In Waterways Development Corp, being the town of Brookhaven, we had a phased project, similar to what we have here this evening, where there was infrastructure laid down without any further development, and that infrastructure was for the, to facilitate the entire project. The court there found that there was vested rights. In Shoemaker Homes, being the village of Maybrook, and this is an important one, there was no, it was a project of apartments. There had been no construction or erection of the apartment buildings. However, the court found that six hundred and fifty-seven hundred thousand dollars were expended on infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater, and roads, and sixty thousand dollars had been expended on grading and utility plans, and that was enough to meet vested rights. As Marion will go through in a little bit, this project was granted a site plan and special use approval in two thousand sixteen. After several extensions and a bit of a delay, the site plans were signed in December twenty twenty, and that's when we start that eighteen-month clock. The project was approved in multiple phases. The environmental review was done for all phases. The site plan review was done for phase one. Phase one has within it thirty-one, or sub-phases, for the construction of thirty-one buildings, and how those would progress. The planning board record demonstrates that Dover Greens estimated that phase one would take approximately four years to construct. That includes thirty-one buildings. It would be impracticable to have a scenario where building permits for all thirty-one structures should be pulled, knowing that building permits are only valid for a year, and you would have to renew them every year at full cost. With that in mind, what the applicant did was start development on the projects they, they did, and we have that in our P, our appeal, and Marion will go through. What Marion will go through is what has been invested, what has been constructed, and what you will find is that we've kind of have flown past those thresholds with the amount of construction and the amount of investments that have been made, which we hope would lead this board to find that our development rights in phase one have vested, and the site plan and special use permit have not expired. First, there have been massive amounts of construction and investment in infrastructure, wastewater treatment plant, water distribution plant, roads and building maintenance. There's been building improvements, and this is very important, to the point where the campus is being utilized. In those cases that I cited earlier, the court found vested rights even when the structure has, had not been built yet. Here, we have development, infrastructure, and buildings, and Olivet is currently using the site. So there has been progress made throughout, the use has been installed on the property, further demonstrating vested rights. In conclusion, we hope that this board will overturn the notice of violation, find that the term necessary in those zoning code provisions means the necessary building permits to vest development rights, and once you vest development rights, you no longer have to worry about your site plan or special use permit expiring, or the zoning code changing. There is one point I'd like to, to make before I hand over to Marion. There is a part of the notice of violation that is related to property at seventy-three Miller Road. The building inspector did find that that was transferred and developed from a single-family home into an educational use. We do not dispute that. Dover Greens will go back and obtain the necessary approvals for that section of the notice of violation. What we are looking for here tonight is reversal of the other portions of the notice of violation to allow Dover Greens and Olivet to continue with their construction and the use of the property. For that, I'll hand it over to Marion.
Could you please state your name?
Good evening, Marion Rebro, Dover Greens president.
And could you, okay, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening, Chair, Board members. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Happy New Year, anyway. Marlene, could you please, on the slide, I would like to share, I think the picture's ten, one picture is thousand words, so I'll try to limit my words. This will play automatically. There is ten minutes break, so we don't need to worry that I talk too much. I would like to share the construction progress on the campus. Before we go into the work that we've done, I would like to remind everybody the status of the property as we acquired it. This is the picture of the, pictures of the different buildings. A strong building there by the flags currently. There's the extensive overgrowth, big deterioration on the windows, roof, rusted metal windows, metal bars on the windows. So one of the works, extensive and significant in the scope, was to clean up the exterior of the buildings. We literally cleaned up each and every building on the campus. There's about seventy structures, which included power washing, repairing broken windows, removing the metal bars, removing extensive overgrowth, patching large leaks on the roofs. And this is how the buildings look by, look like when you pass by these days. There was one, a part of the exterior improvements that basically touched each and every building on the campus. Another exterior facility for the land improvement is outdoor amphitheater for the larger exterior gatherings and events that was built from the scratch using local contractors, and this is the final product for the larger exterior events. Another work on the infrastructure included repayment of existing roads. There is several thousands feet of the roads, parking row, parking areas, as well as the sidewalks that were repaired in large. What a treatment, for a treatment plan, Charlie touched it briefly. We maintain active and current permit from the Department of Health. We turned the facility from the bold water notice into fully compliant water treatment facility, distributing and supplying all buildings of phase one. These pictures we are looking at, airation tank, hydrants, back washing tanks, they were not functional prior to our acquisition. We have a daily operator on the site who submits the results to the, to the county, and we pass all the, all the quality for the, for the work. This is for the sewer similar. We televised over ten thousand linear feet of the sewer distribution, jetted, cleaned, and we are in the process of replacing and upgrading the section for the long run. This is the electrical infrastructure improvement. We brought electricity to numerous buildings throughout the campus, the buildings of the phase one, and over a hundred street lights are illuminated throughout the campus, as well as many buildings now. You can see it when you pass by. Asbestos abatement, we abated thirteen buildings in full using licensed asbestos contractor and also third-party project monitoring firm submitting the results daily to the New York State. Restoring baseball field, that was, got restoration for another exterior sports facility, again, working with the, with the local contractors here. Landscaping and hardscaping, there is two main entrances to the campus, one of the Route twenty-two, one from behind the fire department from the north. We planted over a hundred fully matured trees throughout the campus, and over ten thousand native plants in line with our sustainable approach to the, to the landscaping, and also in, in compliance with our master plan approval. There was extensive work done on many buildings, on the roofing. Many buildings are located off the Route twenty-two, not visible, so a lot of work was done without, you know, passes by noticing, but we have flat roofs, slade roof, shingle roof, so many of them have been replaced and repaired. Examples of some interior renovation, fourteen thousand square feet building, one-one-nine of phase one on the, on the north side of the property, is some example of the interior innovation after the completion. We have replaced close to one thousand windows in the property, in the various buildings. You can see some before-after pictures in the top right before. There was different works. There's also some partial renovations which are not completed yet. This is example of Assembly Hall Building Number thirty-five, fifty thousand square feet auditorium. We fully refinished the floor, cleaned all the bricks, interior, electrical work, and lighting. This is another building chapel, three thousand square feet building. This is two thousand sixteen picture inaugurating Evangelical Center and the multi-use approach for the campus, so it's not a new idea at all. It was conceptualized in two thousand sixteen, and we've been steadily realizing those different uses throughout the campus. This is some example of interior pictures. We also had some new construction that we've done. Couple of buildings were not salvageable, so we first abated them, then did the demolition and did a new build. Another example of a full gut renovation for twenty-one thousand square feet building, exterior from abatement, window replacement, full finishes, as well as mechanic, electrical, plumbing system, all new, including fire protection and fire alarm. Some examples of before-after in the right or left side you see before, and you can easily recognize which one is after. Classroom space. Another example of the gut renovation for the, for the office building. You can see before pictures on the left. It was quite rough shape, but we decided to restore, to maintain the original architectural characters of the, of this hundred-and-twenty-year-old building. It's currently used for offices for World Evangelic Alliance, one of our ministry partners. Following pictures will show activities and different uses that have been done. Following pictures will show activities and different uses that have been done and are ongoing on the campus. We have obviously educational activities, classes in theology, in systematic Bible studies. Currently, we are adjusting our program offering from credit-bearing programs to certificate or post-doctorate programs. They currently specifically include explication of the Book of Romans, Old Testament, New Testament, world mission, Christian online media, and ten making. Example, some of our many classes held in those buildings that we seen earlier. We also have a post-doctorate students doing, working on their papers and developing further research in the area of children education, global missions, and online media, utilizing our library facilities. We have many music classes and different performances and concert and festivals, also in a structured way for the music education, also as well as conferences and seminars that draw a lot of people together. We also have special lectures with our partners like World Evangelical Alliance, which one specifically was on religious persecution. We also have a youth education, whether it's sport or enrichment or academic. We currently have 50 children studying daily on the property. This is another example of a non-credit-bearing program. It's a leadership institute from World Evangelical Alliance organized this program for emerging leaders. It was few weeks program, happening in building 11, they lived and studied for a few weeks in this location, resulting in the certificates. This is another example of a high-profile visit from Germany, General Secretary of World Evangelical Alliance, sitting there with the evangelical church representative from South Korea, they were having a conference for a few days early this year. And this is just a, just kind of snapshot of different activities, also working with locals, supporting local fire department, Center of Compassion, donation drives, offering the golf course facility to local high school and other local students. So that will be the end of my picture presentation. We will fast forward, but if you want to take more than 10 minutes of your time, so apologies for running through it, but I promise it will be less than 10 minutes, which it was. And then there's another one for, for slides, please. I would like to, so this was capturing the, the investment in construction and, and usage in the pictures. You can pause it by escape. There is another one. I would like to also hand the copies, it's only four pages, the board. Okay? So these four pages will be capturing some of these developments in numerical textual Okay, so this is just a snapshot in numbers. We invested over $70 million to date, 13.2 million dollars directly on the building improvements and infrastructure improvements, 94,000 buildings per foot of fully renovated and occupied, currently occupied building space, 170,000 square feet of partially renovated buildings. There was a cost of acquisition, there was a cost of operation, and we also, even though we contract largely outside contractors to perform the work, we also have a direct payroll, 3.6 million dollars, as well as 1.3 million dollars worth of property taxes to date. We obtained to date 27 building permits for Phase One and received 12 certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance for Phase One buildings. Next, please. This is the list of the all buildings of Phase One. It's 30 buildings. The first column is the, for the lack of better word, just a building number. They don't have names here, but we can call them by name, for example, Building 2, Building 3, Building 10. So this is the list of all buildings, part of our Phase One. Second column is identifying those sub-phases that Charlie mentioned earlier, so it's been always envisioned to have a sub-phases in our Phase One development. They are exactly outlined in our approval as Phase 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D. Third column shows the square footage of the building, and following column shows what work was done to which building specifically, including exterior cleanup, asbestos abatement. We have spent extensive amount of resource on the 3D visualization and the conceptual designs for every building in our Phase One. We have eight buildings with full architectural and engineering plans, and we have, we have 170,000 square feet of partially renovated and 94,000 square feet of fully renovated building space. So this is a snapshot with the associated uses. Next slide, please. When we received the notice from the building department last year in September, we were shocked, surprised, puzzled, and didn't know what to, what to think of it, because we are in the midst of our development and on the heels of 2020 December, removal of conditions of our site plan and final signature of the site plan, we've launched extensive capital campaign and to complete all the works of the Phase One, $60 million campaign, and despite pandemic and despite the kind of up and down economic conditions, we were very successful. And in the middle of the campaign, we secured $36 million worth of pledges from the donors that are ready to invest as we progress one by one, and we received this letter, and we were just shocked and puzzled. Lastly, we regularly try our best, may not be perfect, but we do try sincerely to update and keep local officials and county officials up to date to our development. We receive, we are in touch continuously and receive support from, from local town board, from the supervisor, which we appreciate very much, as well as as a former and current county executive, our district assemblyman and senator. That's all, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Or either one? No one has any questions? Mike, do you have any questions, or do you want to comment on anything?
Well, it's a public hearing, I think you want, first, you know, you just want to ask the members of the public that are here if they want to contribute.
Okay, is there anybody from the members of the public that signed in that would like to speak?
Okay. Then it's, it's up to you guys if you want to, if you feel like you have enough information from what we submitted, both from, from Charles and from Marion.
Well, I, okay, I guess I'll, I'll speak. Should we listen to the public first, right?
Sure.
That's Charlie.
I signed up.
Oh, okay.
I don't need to go again.
No, you don't have to swear again, you already were sworn in.
No, I, I, I thought I had to sign up to speak initially, so.
Oh, okay. And there's Eric Lochner, how do you say that? I'm sorry, I'm really bad about, you know what?
Lochner, and I don't have anything to say at this time.
Okay, all right. Okay, the only thing I, I have, I have to say is that you are operating your school fine without the, without the permits, right? Without the stop-work order? You're still operating everything else?
Well, I, I think we just need to clarify that there are things that have, there are uses and buildings that have a certificate of occupancy, and, and the, the stop-work order.
Is not, doesn't apply to that.
Yeah, it's applicable to.
For the new construction.
That's right, it's for the new construction.
Okay, for the new construction.
So.
Okay. And then I was just gonna state, you know, this is all well, good, but there's no really documents that really tell us how much you've really spent.
We can provide that. You know, this was, you know, we wanted to.
I mean, it's a beautiful presentation.
We can absolutely, you know, I realize that investments is one of the criteria, and so we wanted to hear from you guys what kind of specific information and maybe what format you wanted that information in, and that certainly can be provided.
Okay.
We consolidate our financial statements with Olivet University, and those statements are audited by the certified financial auditor, and those numbers you've seen are the audited numbers, so.
Okay.
We have no problem providing whatever information you need.
Okay, that would be great.
Marion, do you know how much the, the total build-out cost is projected for Phase One? Is there an idea of what, what that total cost is?
It's about 75, 80 million dollars.
Okay.
That's why we had that $60 million campaign to wrap up.
The campaign, okay.
Yes.
And, and the reason why I'm asking is, so, and Deb, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm gonna just step in and talk for a little bit.
No, he's gonna talk.
So the vested rights concept is, I would say, highly technical. It's not complicated, but it, it's technical in the requirements of having to show substantial construction and the substantial expenditure of funds. And then there's a third component in the cases, which, from what I've seen, and I'm, I'm gonna ask Charlie if he would kindly supplement this, is there's a risk in all those cases of loss of the use in its entirety because of something that's happened, whether it's, it's an amendment to the zoning code, and that's typically what the situation is, which is that a developer's gone forward, they've made a significant investment in a project, the town board has gone and changed the use, or it was already a use that was not permitted, let's say a grandfathered use, and, and what had gone on, the facts and circumstances of those cases typically involved the removal of that use, and if the site plan was allowed to expire, then the developer would lose the use in its entirety. So there's, there's three components of that, and, and my job is, is to, to provide discreet legal advice to the zoning board of appeals. So you guys have made your application, a number of cases are quoted in, in the, in the submittal by your attorney. I've pulled a couple cases and I, I prepared a preliminary memorandum for the board so that they have some idea of the concept of vested rights, so that when you guys come and talk, it makes sense to everybody. And then you guys put additional information into the record, which is necessary in order for the board to, to make a determination. Likely what they'll ask me to do is, is take the information that you guys have presented this evening, which has been really helpful, and it's some of the information that Charlie and I spoke about on the phone prior to the meeting. He gave me a call and said, hey, look, you know, we're, we're gonna come before you guys next week, is there anything you think, you know, we might need to help us? And, and you guys have, you know, presented that information. And, and then what I anticipate the board to do is to say, okay, look, you know, we, we'd like to have a, a written resolution for, for the matter, which we wouldn't do tonight, we would just do it the next meeting, and typically drafted in both ways, one, either determining vested rights or not, or in the alternative, not vested rights, but obviously addressing the initial question. And there are two questions that are, that are here, which number one is the application of the word necessary. And if you guys determine that they have pulled the necessary permits, then we don't get to the vested rights question. It's really two parts. You really only have to talk about vested rights if, if you determine that the word necessary is ambiguous in the code. And what case law says is that when there's a zoning provision or a word or a sentence in the zoning code that's ambiguous, the municipality is obligated by case law, which is judge-made law, to interpret the code against the municipality and in the favor of the landowner. And, and what the case law says is that it prefers the unrestricted use of property, acknowledges the, the import of a zoning code and why we have it, but when you're drafting a code, it's your code, so you, you want it to say what you mean. And if it doesn't say what you mean, then you should go amend it to say what you mean. So, which is obviously what, what the applicant's argument is, is, is how do you view the word necessary, and does the zoning board view it the same way as, as the building inspector does? So there's, there's really two things for, for the, for the board to look at, which is, again, what does the word necessary mean in the context of the code? And then number two, do we get to the vested rights question? If you determine the word necessary is in fact all, then we would, we would adjust, you guys would make a determination on vested rights. Because again, if you determine that they've pulled the necessary permits, then, then we don't, we don't, we don't get there.
Just one comment, Michael, five minutes.
Sure.
One of the many arguments which you can read in the appeal was that necessary could never meant all, really, because our approval itself includes our subphasing for Phase One, which will take at minimum four years, which is less, which is more than 18 months. One of the many arguments.
Yeah, so here's, I'm, I'm glad you raised that, because we have a month until we get to the next meeting, and we're at, I'll prepare resolutions for the board to vote at, unless you guys are ready to, to make any resolutions tonight, that, that's okay. But I, I, I think one of the things that, that's really critical here, and the chair and I have been discussing this amongst ourselves and in the context of the appeal, which is that we feel that the resolution from the planning board should just be clarified to address your phasing, because I think there's a failure there to do that, but the intent is very clear from your environmental impact statement and from what was proposed, that it was likely never to be done in 18 months. There's an enormous amount of work that was, you know, proposed in your Phase One. And, and, you know, in our discussion, we look at your Phase One, you guys are, are as a, as a very significant project. It makes sense to me why you would go get a Phase One that includes the renovation of 31 buildings. To me, that, that is what is necessary for you to show to your investors that you have a very significant project that requires a significant, significant capital campaign, and that you have a full project, right? That makes a lot of sense. But there's, the hiccup is in, in the code that says you have to pull, you know, all necessary permits within 18 months. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the necessi, necessary permits. There's like a Freudian slip there, so. So, there, there is one thing, you know, you guys don't have to do it, you know, I, I think it should be considered, which is, instead of the, you know, going back to the planning board and asking them for, for a reapproval, I can understand your reluctance, right? You're in the middle of a capital campaign, and if you can't show to your investors that there's a valid, a non-expired site plan, right, that it could pose some pretty significant issues for you guys. We, we, I think everybody can recognize that, there's no, no issue there. I would ask you, because we'll have 30 days, I think there'll be a planning board meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Marilyn, is there a planning board meeting between now and the next zoning board?
January 23rd.
Okay. Again, I'm only making a suggestion, you don't have to go do this, you have all the rights, you, you are the, you're the appellant, right? It's within your guys' purview. But it would seem logical to me to ask the, the planning board to clarify the prior resolution to facilitate your phasing, to say, hey, look, you know, there's 31 buildings, we're in, you know, we're, I don't know, $20 million into your $60 million project, I, I think, you know, you've evidenced very clearly your commitment to your purpose in a, in a pretty spectacular way, if I might say. But you might ask them to say, hey, look, you know, let's take buildings one through seven and make that sub-phase one 18 months, sub-phase two buildings, whatever, you know, another 18 months, where you guys get the full, your full four years. Certainly avoid the teeth gnashing, and I think the concern is, is, or at least mine is, the attorney to the board in, 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 you know, discussions with the chair is, is that if we determine that, that, if the board determines that, that necessary does in fact mean all, and that vested rights are not vested, you guys are, you know, another month or two out, and, and there's, you know, a potential risk there. And really what I'm trying to do is help you guys hedge your bets and mitigate your risk. I understand the concern about asking for a site plan approval, again, you know, potential for public hearing. for public hearing, all kinds of comments that you might not be able to address, extended time periods to get that all done. I think it's obvious, you know, nobody wants to go back to the planning board for a site plan approval, but it's just a suggestion I have. There's a meeting coming up, you don't have to take this suggestion. I'm just putting my thoughts out there to maybe assist in some way, and then thereafter, depending on what the board wants to do, if.
I think Charlie wants to.
Yeah, no, no.
It's my good figure.
Modification to the resolution. Charlie, the deadline for the next meeting was today.
Modifying.
The next ZVA meeting?
The next planning board meeting.
No, we have to.
The next CBA meeting is next Wednesday.
So just, thank you, a few things to just kind of clarify and to put in perspective as you're deliberating. We will provide additional information. You know, I don't totally agree that there's a third factor to the vested rights thing. I do realize a lot of the vested rights cases are, you know, you've had approvals for a number of years, the zoning code changes, and then, you know, that's just kind of the most common fact pattern you see. It's not a standard necessarily, but it's a fact pattern. The cases and the intent behind vested rights is, and it is a case-by-case determination, at what point is it equitable to look at a property owner who has property rights and say, you've invested millions and millions of dollars, and so now, town, you can no longer tinker with the approvals. And that's really the key of vested rights. You can't have property owners who are developing property in a constant state of limbo until they're entirely done with their process. And if we were to go back to the planning board, amend the site plan approval, in a perfect world where, you know, where things may not happen if we go back to the planning board, sure, but we have now, in our belief, vested property rights in phase one, in the approvals that we got, which the cases tell us a municipality would be unable to tinker with because it is a foul to our vested rights and puts at risk the millions of dollars that have been invested. So we would ask that this board see this process through, right, before we go back to the planning board, because the whole idea of vested rights is, we have a valid site plan, the rights have been vested, it can't expire. And I'll go back and look at some cases that have similar fact patterns on that, and we can kind of go back and forth, and I'll supply that information. But that's kind of where we are today. It's the intent of the vested rights doctrine to get to a point where a developer can be certain, and his investors can be certain, that the project can proceed as approved and can't be tinkered with or changed by the municipality. And that's the case we have here tonight and with Dover Greens, is all this money, all this work has been done, we're already in front of the ZVA to go back before the planning board, get an amended approval, and I'm not entirely assured that the planning board by resolution can deviate from that eighteen-month language in the zoning code until this board makes a determination. So a good suggestion, but it really runs afoul to the reason we're here and the belief that we have vested our rights.
I'm probably gonna continue the public hearing.
It's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, should I do it now?
Sure. Any of the board members have anything?
Want anything to comment on, or anything you would like to say? Not at this time, not at this moment, kidokey. I'm gonna make a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay.
Who seconded?
Greg.
If I may ask, when is the next deadline for submission to ZVA to?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Yep, for a February first meeting.
So it was a little bit more detail on the financials, including statements? Is there anything else, some more information on the case law that's been cited? Is there any other questions that we might be able to address, or?
I don't have any right now, no.
Sure, and, you know, if it comes to, you do think of some, you know, as you're playing a bench, I can give Michael a call.
Great.
We'll be happy to, you know, give you everything you need.
Just one question, you indicated that Dover Greens was rolled up into the parent company for financial information that we would be receiving. Are there any other subsidiaries that are rolled up as well?
The university has its corporate structure, they have a number of subsidiaries, Dover Greens is one, but we will provide you just purely the Dover Greens second of those.
Thank you.
Marion, is there a single accountant for Dover Greens?
Auditor, yeah.
Or auditor?
Yeah.
Okay, just so the, we don't need to see paid receipts, if you have an auditor that just confirms the.
Yeah, we will figure out the form, we have, we will.
Okay, great, yeah. That'd be great.
Thank you. Okay. I forgot.
Escrow.
Oh, yeah, we need to increase the escrow to five hundred, is everybody, a motion to increase the escrow to five hundred?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody oppose? Thank you.
We'll get that to you when we reach the bench.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the April sixth, twenty twenty-two minutes for the meeting. Motion to approve the minutes, have everybody read them?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody oppose? Okay.
Debbie, who approved them?
Greg approved the motion, and second was Joanne.
Okay.
Sorry. Greg, you need to speak into the mic.
Right here in front of me, you can't hear me?
I can.
Sorry.
Just move it closer.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is the deadline schedule for twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve the schedule?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay.
I just want to note that the next two meetings will be February first, twenty twenty-three. The deadline date is January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and March first for a deadline of February eighth, twenty twenty-three. I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.